Let us pray. Most kind and gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day. We thank you for the opportunity to be here tonight to take care of this great county, the business that's at hand. Be with us now as we conduct this meeting, see that we do it in a manner that is most pleasing to you. For these things we ask in your holy name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Watkins, will you do the roll call, please?
Mr. Evelyn?
Here.
Mr. Tiller?
Here.
Ms. Page?
Here.
Mr. Steers?
Here.
And Mr. Lockwood?
Here.
First item on the agenda, is there consent agenda? Questions, comments?
Madam Chair, if there's no comments, I move to approve the consent agenda as presented that it be made part of the record.
Thank you, Ms. Evelyn. Ms. Watkins, will you hold them up for please?
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Steers?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye.
Now we have our small business close-up. Ms. Monnet?
Excuse me. Apologies for not having my tie on, I was running and I was trying to eat dinner in the car with Mr. Steers, so that's all that is. We do not have a small business close-up tonight, there was an issue with our highlight, but I did want to make the board and the public aware of a couple initiatives were undertaken in economic development. The first, I want to thank Mr. John Martz for inviting me into his office today. We are working on a job fair that they started last spring, or last fall, it was a smash hit, so he brought me in on this, so I'm not going to take any of the credit, I know his staff is doing a wonderful job, but we're looking to have that on May 20th, 11 to 2:00 PM. I believe the location's going to be at Corinth Church, we'll solidify that. Hopefully, we're going to run out of room there and look for a bigger location, but so that's May 20th, 11 to 2:00. If there are any businesses out there who would like to participate, just let me know, 966-9603, they can give me a call. Second of all, initiative we're undertaking with Richmond Region Tourism, to promote tourism. May 12th, we're going to be holding a workshop. Richmond Region Tourism is bringing an army of people and laptops, and it's going to be to teach our tourism-based businesses how to interact and use their website to better boost their business and awareness. So these are just two initiatives. Economic development's not always about attracting, it's also about working with your existing businesses, so those are two things, I'll keep you updated as details become available, but May 20th for a job fair, May 12th for a work session with Richmond Region Tourism.
Thank you, Ms. Monnet. Now we have our citizens' comment period. Thank you, sir. Ma'am, I would ask that you state your name and your address, and keep your comments to three minutes, please.
Thank you, yes. My name's Lynn Wilson, I live at 680 Crib Lane in Sandston. So thank you very much this evening. Good evening. My husband and I own 44 acres off of Dispatch Road, part of a farm that extends across the river into Henrico where we live. So why come before you this evening? A new gas pipeline proposal is galloping through the State Corporation Commission approval process, largely under the public radar and under the guise as business as usual. The Mechanicsville parallel pipeline would run 14.6 miles roughly through Cold Harbor to Bottoms Bridge and then into Charles City. The new 30-inch diameter line parallels an existing 16-inch line. It's all part of a massive VNG project called the Header Improvement Project. They'll eventually try to take my property and that of my neighbors through condemnation and Virginia's eminent domain law. But as much as we all fret over the fate of our own land, it doesn't take long to realize that there are big reasons everyone in New Kent should be concerned, and it boils down to three issues. First, the construction of this pipeline would be environmentally devastating. 175-watt swath is what the corridor will require for construction, putting at risk 115 acres of wetland, 176 acres of forest, 40 stream and river crossings, 14 archaeological and historical sites, and this is the best-case scenario, not even considering the permit violations seen in such kinds of construction. Second, this new pipeline is no ordinary gas pipeline. It is a large, high-pressure pipeline carrying a lot of gas. Let me say it again, a large, high-pressure pipeline carrying a lot of gas. Nothing like we've seen before, and here's the thing, what happens if something goes wrong? No one wants to live or own property or work within a half-mile of a pipeline like this. Check out the pipeline route map for yourself if you live in Quentin, especially in Patriots Landing. Ask VNG for its map of impact and evacuation zones. Perhaps you will have more luck in getting a response from them than I have. Could it be that they don't want to talk about pipe ruptures and explosions and special training for emergency responders until their application is approved? Third, this pipeline does not benefit us. Its primary justification is to fuel the C4 GT power plant in Charles City. This plant would sell wholesale power to the PJM transmission grid and is not even intended to benefit Virginians, much less our area. It is a polluting mercenary plant that wants to feed off rack Marcellus shale gas rushed to market by Midwestern investors. They get any profits, we get the pollution, the environmental destruction, and the equivalent of a bomb buried in our backyards. There's more. Everything I've described so far would serve just this one new power plant. A second plant, Chico Hominy Power, half again as large, has not yet made its gas infrastructure needs known. When those plans come to light, what more will New Kent be expected to allow? The FCC comment period is open through April 28th. I urge you to study and to comment upon this case. It's high time we started being more critical of what industry wants to do in New Kent. We will no longer be patted on the head or take VNG assurances at face value. Thank you so much for your time. I really wanted to make you aware of this concern, it's been under the radar, and I felt like it was very important to bring it to the leadership of New Kent County. Thank you so much. I have a copy of my remarks, I will leave.
You can leave them.
Thank you.
We will have Judy Cogburn, please. Please state your name and address, and you have three minutes for your comments, ma'am.
Judith B. Cogburn. I live at 4001 Quentin Road in Quentin, Virginia, and I've happily lived there for the past 25 years. I'm here because I too am very concerned about this pipeline that's going through. I at first thought, well, everyone would have checked out, you know, what was happening and that it would be not harmful here, but I've looked at similar pipelines in the country, and just this past August, when the exact same size blew up in Kentucky and killed a person and burned five houses. That same pipeline in Ohio blew up a year ago in January. So I think we need some more information, and I'm calling on the board to hold some sort of informational meeting where we can maybe hear from both sides of the story before the FCC has their vote, and we can decide just how, you know, New Kent should proceed with this, because the ramifications are very uncomfortable from what I've been reading. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That concludes our citizens' comment period. Now we will have our residents administrators' report, please.
Madam Chair, members of the board, Mr. Hathaway, Marshall Wynn with VDOT. This past month, excuse me, we've had 61 work orders completed, 132, and had five callouts, after-hour callouts. We have the marketplace signal warrant analysis is still underway, and soon as we get that information, we will forward it on to Mr. Hathaway and others for their information. From what I understand, from the last board meeting, I wasn't here, I was driving across country with my son going to spring training, so I'm sorry I missed that one. But as I understand, Mr. Tiller, at 2316 Brook Boulevard, that cul-de-sac, Joe has met with the citizen there, he's got a plan, he's explained that plan to the citizen, they're getting that area marked, it should be completed by tomorrow. And Ms. Page, I know that Joe has been in contact with you, from what I understand. If that's not exactly right, let me know.
Yes.
With the list that you had last month. Other than that, I really don't have anything else to, you know, talk about. If y'all have any questions, I'd be glad to discuss them with you.
Mr. Lockwood, do you have anything?
Yes, Mr. Wynn emailed about the cutting of overhanging limbs back on Rockahock, and he said that would be done on the 16th.
That's what Joe told me, yes.
I also got a call this week, last week, excuse me, from Mr. Davis, Mr. Ray Davis, asking if we would have somebody come out on Farmer's Drive and do the same thing, there's a lot of overhanging limbs and vines from where you guys went through last year.
Okay.
A lot of vines hanging down over the road, and that would be between Holystown and Lake on Farmer's Drive. I did have a trash request, trash pickup request, is that something that y'all are still doing?
Yes, we do it all the time.
Old Telegraph Road between Rockahock and Route 60, I have a specific request from President Thayer, so he's got it written down.
Okay.
Thank you. Mr. Steers?
Thank you. Mr. Wynn, I talked with you last week about the road signs in Brickshire.
Right.
Needing to be replaced, and you were so gracious to give them permission to, I guess, break the state code, instead of green and white, they could use black and white.
Correct.
Their question now is, since these are on your roads, is VDOT willing to pay for it?
No.
Sir, I didn't want to ask you that question, but I told them I would ask you that question.
It sounds like a special project to me. Road name signs, as the county should know.
Right.
Are the county's responsibility, not VDOT. We're responsible for route numbers, that sort of thing.
Okay, and that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Steers. Mr. Tiller?
Just a few.
Uh-oh.
And I've gotten several calls, I think some of the other board members have as well, we're on long routes. Along Route 60 near your substation, the trash there, it seems like just in the last couple of weeks, it's just exploded somehow or another.
Okay.
So I said I would bring that up. And I know y'all did a lot of repair work and resurfacing in Five Lakes on Pinehurst and Point Drive. Are they finished in there? I think y'all did a great job, because some of the patches are 150 feet long, that looks really nice.
Right, I think some of that patch you're seeing is probably some of the schedule work that's upcoming.
Okay.
And I'm planning on putting that schedule work together for the county and forwarding it on to Rodney, so he can pass it out to y'all, so y'all know where, you know, resurfacing's going to take place.
Okay, all right. I said I would ask. And westbound on 60, just past your substation, right-hand lane, the guy said you would hit it with your left tire. Still, it's in the concrete, but it's a hole, a pothole that's starting, and you can see the concrete is starting to crumble.
Okay.
That's just past your substation, westbound, right-hand lane. And another lady sent me an email the other day, lives on Willow Lane, which is in Five Lakes Forest, I believe. I think she said last year they came in and they paved Forest Drive or resurfaced it, but they did not do the cul-de-sac that she lived in.
Okay.
And that needed, she said that's starting to crumble, and they were considering having their driveway paved, and they didn't want to do anything until they found out whether VDOT was going to do improvements or repairs on that.
Okay.
Same lady called or emailed, asked, and she said, I know this is not even in New Kent, but can you at least ask? 64 West at the waystation?
Okay.
Just where they widened it?
Mm-hmm.
That merge lane coming out of the waystation back onto 64. I know they had to have increased the length of that lane three times what it was.
At least, yeah.
And she said numerous times that she's been going there, and when people go by that waystation, they think they're getting in that right lane to get onto 295, and then they run out of the lane. They actually get into that merge lane from the waystation?
Okay.
And wondering if there was any way you could have that marked, so that people wouldn't get in that lane and have to get back over.
That's coming off of 295 to 64 East?
Nope, 64 West.
64 West, okay.
From Bottoms Bridge.
Okay, I got you.
And that lane is, because I mean, it went all the way up, I think they increased that lane up until, I think it's a Meadow Road overpass?
Yeah, yeah.
Where it eventually runs out.
Mm-hmm.
And she said numerous times, she's seen people in the right lane get over into that lane thinking that was the right-hand lane.
Right.
And then they run out and have to get back into traffic.
Okay.
If there was any way they could mark that to let people know that it was...
I'll have to give a traffic engineer a say.
Okay. She said anything to help keep people from going over and then have to come right back out.
Okay.
And that's all.
Okay.
Ms. Evelyn?
How you doing, Mr. Wynn?
Good.
Just one thing, on 106, the signal again, I think maybe you could get your traffic engineers out there again to look at that. Even when nobody's in the turning lanes, I mean, the traffic's backing up coming out of Loves and Pilot, the signal's just very slow.
Okay.
When people aren't even in the turning lanes, it's still going green, and by just sitting there, there's a lot more traffic. I know especially during the springtime, summertime, when traffic gets heavy up there, it's going to be a nightmare, so.
All right, I'll give you a look at that.
That's all I have.
All right.
Wow, thank you, Ms. Evelyn. Hi, Mr. Wynn. Compliments, I'm thanking you all for doing, using the Bush Acts to do Cooksmill Road, Stage Road, and Watkins Road, and also had a very happy resident in Barrensville thanking you for coming down and cleaning out that pipe.
Right. Still got some more work to do there.
Absolutely, and I made a note of that, and other than that all, that's all I have, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Now we have a presentation from Arts Alive, their annual report. Mr. Tim Dice with their marketing committee co-chair.
Good evening, supervisors.
Good evening.
I'm glad to be here once again. Last year, they farmed me out to one of the other counties in our area, and I miss being here, because you've been such a wonderful support to Arts Alive since its inception back in 2004. I think the first time I met one of the supervisors from New Kent was way back when Jimmy Burrell came to one of our events way back, I think, 2006. Standing with me today is one of our new add-ons to the Arts Alive family. Her name is Elisa Relier, and she's working with us on promoting publicity, and especially for publications. You have in front of you, I don't know if you've got it printed out, but you certainly can see the video display here. Arts Alive is more than just performances. We bring two children's theater camps to the area, we have three scholarships that we offer to graduating high school seniors, and we have a lot of visual art workshops and exhibits that we put on display. And all of those are involving a lot of citizens and artists who reside here in New Kent County. And Elisa, by the way, is a resident of the county. I'm just over the border. On page two, if I can do this, there it is, we're showing our current stage performances. Unfortunately, there's only two of them left. April 18th, the Broadway-bound, Three Redneck Tenors are coming back by popular demand, and then Sail On will be our final show for this season, that's on May 2nd. Unfortunately, the tickets for that, I say unfortunately for anybody who doesn't have a ticket yet, we're down to about 30 seats available for each one, so if you would like to, let us know right away, we'll put in the name and see what comes up. On page three, we have a survey of our next season, it's already lined up and booked. Again, I want to emphasize the great variety that we offer to the county. We have the Atlantic City Boys, that's a tribute to the music of the Four Seasons. We have Crude Quebeca, which is a combo, a husband-and-wife combination. We're bringing back the Sons of Serendip, they were extremely popular last year, they're going to do their holiday show this year. We have a group called Farewell Angelina, and they are proof, living proof, that the Dixie Chicks are not the only country group touring as a female country group. They're very, very good, and I hope that they will be well-received in the area. And then the Everly Brothers set is coming back, that will be our last show of next season. So there's a good variety for the next season. If you look at page four, we wanted to emphasize the summer camps that we offer. Here are some pictures from the first summer camp we have, which is usually the last week of June, and for this last year, 56 of our 158 campers were from New Kent County, so that's over a third. We offer 49 different classes, and a lot of our volunteers and teachers also came from New Kent, so they're very much invested in what's here, and yes, the teachers are paid for their work. Page five shows the other drama camp that we've put in, it's the Missoula Drama Camp. This company comes with all of the accoutrements for the production, each year they do a different show, and then at the end of the week, there is a performance, two performances by the students. We had over 300 citizens come and see that, and in this past year, 30%, about a third of these children participated, were from New Kent County. I believe that's the production of Aladdin that they did this past summer. Page six shows information about our scholarships. We have three scholarships, but only one of them was claimed last year because we didn't have enough applicants. So we're hoping that by virtue of seeing our presentation tonight, some of the New Kent residents will apply for these. We have two scholarships under C. Herbert Brown. One is for dance and theater students, the other one would be for music, singing or instrumentalist. And then we have the Andy Conklin Scholarship, which is for the non-performance things in the arts.
Can I jump in for one?
Sure.
One second. I will say that this year, when we looked at our applications, we expanded, and we're not requiring that the applicants major in a specific visual arts or performing arts major, we're really looking to, are you pursuing a career? So we've expanded, especially the visual arts could be graphic design, web design, fashion design, so that was really what we're trying to do, to really reach out and to help more seniors take advantage of this wonderful opportunity.
And it does help to shape the career, so we hope that that meets well with your approval. On page seven, we have one of our other aspects, maybe the most unknown, I don't know, but visual art workshops and exhibits coincide with our productions, our performances. Each exhibit is changed for each performance that we have, but we use fine arts educators and local artists who, from the Virginia Museum of Art, to actually do the workshops. And I have to say that almost all of the workshops this past year were full, though they're very popular with residents, and there are a lot of New Kent artists who are on display at our various exhibits. Page eight shows some of the community highlights that we're involved with. I'm going to give you some specific information about the one in the lower-right corner there, VMFA on the Road. Virginia Museum of Fine Arts has resurrected their Art Mobile, we had it in West Point for the Crab Carnival, and we have a date for bringing it to New Kent County. Let's move on to page nine, so I can finish up here. There are some community highlights that we're doing all over the area, various enterprises in all the counties that we support are participating, and if there are any ideas that come from enterprises here in New Kent County, we would be most receptive to them. I know that in the past, we have had events both at Saudi Creek Winery and at the New Kent Winery, and we're looking to expand and continue to do things in the area. On page 10, there are some more highlights there, supporting education and offering tickets to various groups. We have donated season tickets to the New Kent High School Music Department to encourage their students to attend, supported the Three Rivers Cultural Festival, that was out in the Hockley area, and we've partnered with many local organizations in supporting them in response to their requests. On page 11 is what I think is perhaps the most exciting thing for New Kent residents to hear about. VMFA is bringing their Art Mobile, it's a big 18-wheeler, it's basically an art museum on wheels, and right now, they are gearing up for a new show, it's called Landscapes of Virginia. Imagine New Kent County residents seeing pictures of the landscapes of Virginia, from the mountains to the sea and all points in between, which would include New Kent County. So we're hoping that they will come and see that. We have it set up for May 7th, 8th, and 9th at your event called A Taste of New Kent. It will be on display somewhere, accessible to the citizens, and there is no charge for this. Arts Alive is sponsoring it and bringing it in, and you see some pictures there from the exhibit we had last October. In conclusion, we thank you for supporting us. You have been an integral part of Arts Alive since our inception back in 2004. We're asking that you would support us in the amount of $5,500 for the coming year, and with the knowledge that that would be doubled by the Virginia Commission of the Arts, so that really helps our effort. Arts Alive loves feedback, so if you have any questions, or if you have things you want to direct to our coordinators, you're certainly welcome to. Elisa and I will try and answer any questions if you have them right now, but again, we thank you for your time and your ongoing support.
Thank you. Are there any questions? Yes, sir.
Yes, and when you said the thing about the scholarships and nobody interested in them, we had a similar problem with my high school. We had a group that formed a scholarship program for seniors. In the first couple of years, I mean, we actually had an application process that we went through and met as a group to decide who we could get the scholarship to, and after about five years, nobody applied. I mean, it wasn't a big scholarship, but it was something to help with, even if it was just for books, but it was hard to give money away, it really was.
We found that to be true, yeah.
And finally, we just, you know, went to the guidance counselors and tried to get them more involved in the process, and you'd get one or two, but it really is hard to give money away.
Interesting thing is, with our scholarships, we give them the $1,000 to start with, they are eligible for a renewal of 500 if they continue with what they said they were starting in their educational program, so, yeah.
They're being quite that far.
Whatever you can do, yeah. It's funny, you can't give money away.
Yeah, it's a shame.
It certainly would help.
Fewer comments. We thank you so much, sir, for being here, it's a pleasure meeting you, and we thank you for, in particular, the camps that you hold.
Yeah.
And so I've been to one, went through and visited, and I mean, the kids were having a ball, so we thank you for that, sir.
You're welcome, you're welcome. We really enjoy it. Elisa's just getting to know what we're all about, but I've been there since the beginning, and it's wonderful. My wife and I both participate, and it's a wonderful organization, doing a lot of good things, and we're expanding, as you can tell, within reason, though. Thank you very much.
Thank you for being here. Thank you. Now we have our FY21 County Administrator's Budget Presentation, Mr. Rodney Hathaway.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and members of the board. This afternoon, you have before you the FY21 County Administrator, my recommendation for the upcoming fiscal year budget. I have a PowerPoint that I'll go through, which summarizes the budget, but you should have before you the proposed detailed budget with all of the line items and background And before I start my presentation as well, I'd like to thank the Budget Committee that has put in a lot of hard work, months of work, meeting with different departments, looking at a lot of data, and putting together this recommendation. Rebecca Guthrie, our Financial Services Manager, Director, excuse me... Rebecca Guthrie, our Financial Services Manager, Director, excuse me, Larry Clark, our Deputy Director, Justin Stotter, our Assistant County Administrator, and Mrs. Patricia Page, our Chair for the Board of Supervisors. This evening, I present to you a budget that totals seventy-six million, seventy-nine-thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-six dollars. That total is based on a rate of eighty-two, a real estate rate of eighty-two cents per hundred, which keeps our current real estate rate. I want to be clear with that, though. This is a reassessment year, and because of that, we're required by law to equalize our rate, and that equalized rate would drop our rate to seventy-six cents per one hundred. So essentially, by my recommendation of keeping the rate at its current level of eighty-two cents per one hundred, that is a six-cent tax increase. The value of the penny has increased to just over three-hundred-and-nineteen-thousand dollars, which we've been rounding up to three-twenty, is the value of one penny on the tax rate. I get a lot of questions from the public as to where do their tax dollars go? So I think it's very appropriate to show this, because this is a breakdown of, of the proposed budget. As you can see, the school's budget is just under fifty percent of our budget, which is very common for all localities, cities and counties, that schools are pretty much half of a county's operating budget. And as you can see, there's probably no surprises here. Public Safety, Debt Service, Administration, our contingency are headed at the top. Based on the eighty-two cent tax increase that's being proposed, new revenues for FY twenty-one would total four-million-one-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventeen dollars. That's new revenues that we're projecting above our current year's budget. I've also provided a breakdown in this slide of those new revenues, so you and the public can see exactly where that revenue comes from. The majority of that, the line, half of that is from real estate taxes for the FY twenty-one year. Again, this is a reassessment year, which has, which we've seen increased property values from. Personal property taxes, that's a number that has continued to grow for us, and I think it's a sign of a good economy. When the economy is good, people have more income to spend, and they're buying more vehicles, trucks, trailers, boats. And that's a number that we're projecting to see a growth of eight-hundred-and-eighty-four-thousand, five-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars, based on current trends over the past several years. The Safer Grant, which is the next item, that is the grant that we've received to hire twelve new firefighters, which we're underway currently in the process of hiring those too. I believe we filled all but two positions, and I think one of those, we're close to making an offer one. So we should soon have the twelve new firefighters, so we can begin our training academy for that. But we received a grant for year one in the amount of five-hundred-and-fifty-five-thousand, four-hundred-and-eight dollars. That does not cover the total cost, so the county will be responsible for a hundred-and-eighty-five-thousand dollars for the twelve new firefighters. The next several items, I'm glad to see. I think they're also indicators of a strong economy. We're anticipating sales tax increases in the amount of two-hundred-and-sixty-eight-thousand, two-hundred-and-twenty-one dollars. And this is not an increase that the county, we're not increasing the rate, but just the growth of our economy. Businesses are doing well. We see that that revenue source will grow. Business license, and we're anticipating growth there, as far as meals taxes as well. Interest revenue, we are anticipating a hundred-and-eighty-eight-thousand, three-hundred-and-two dollars in growth. A lot of that is because of the economy. Interest rates are increasing, and I really want to give a kudos to our treasurer as well, that's actively finding new and creative ways to invest our resources. Vehicle registration, we anticipate an increase of twenty-one thousand, and of course, if we're getting more personal property taxes, because people are buying more, more vehicles, then we anticipate to see a growth in our vehicle registration as well. That's the additional twenty-five-dollar fee that you, residents, pay for each of their vehicles. We are showing a decrease of three-hundred-thousand for advanced deposit wagering, and actually, this is a good thing. When Colonial Downs originally closed, there was legislation adopted that provided revenue to New Kent County from the four OTBs that did not close and that were operated by the Virginia Thoroughbred Association. Most of those OTBs were in Northern Virginia. I believe one might have been in Maryland or close to. But we received, we continue to see about three-hundred-thousand dollars of revenue. Now, the majority of that money, we placed in capital, and we didn't appropriate, because we didn't know how long we were going to receive that, and there was some uncertainty with that funding. But the way that code was written is when we reached the limit of four-hundred-thousand dollars of gambling revenue, and Colonial Downs is included, the money that we get from historic horse racing is included in that number, the advanced depositing wagering With the success of Colonial Downs, we anticipate we'll reach that four-hundred-thousand in less than a month, just from the historic horse racing machine. So we're not projecting any revenue from advanced deposit wagering. And again, it's a good thing, and it shows the success of Colonial Downs. And then other revenues across the board, there's probably close to a hundred, if not more, line items of revenue sources that we receive revenues from. We're projecting a decrease of sixteen-thousand-one-hundred-and-forty-nine. The main driver there is grants. That's all, that's all included in our revenues as well. Okay, allocations. I've mentioned the four-point-one number in new anticipated revenues. This slide shows my recommendation of expenditures for, for that revenue. And to walk you through this slide, the first two items, that is what it takes to implement the new elementary school project. I'm sorry, Items One and Item Three is the full cost of the new elementary school project. The annual operating cost, we've budgeted as two-million-and-forty-five-thousand dollars. And the debt service, we've budgeted one-million-four-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand dollars to cover the full operating costs of the project and the anticipated full debt service of the project. If you go down to the third from the bottom item, you'll see school set aside, and that totals two-million-and-forty-three-thousand, six-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars. That is currently the annual set aside for the new elementary school, which equates to roughly seven cents on the, the tax rate. The difference between Items One and Three, if you add those and then subtract the third item from the bottom, you'll come up with the total of new revenues that's needed for the new elementary school, which is roughly one-million-four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, which is part of the four-point-one million number, and it is included in the new FY twenty-one expenditures. The second item, which we skipped over, is new personnel items, a new personnel request, which on the next slide, I'll break down that one-point-five-million-dollar number. That's something that I really tried to focus on during this, this budget request. As you know, for the past four or five years, we've been setting aside funding for the new elementary school to lessen the tax burden on our, our residents. And because of that, everybody had to tighten their belts, the county as, as well as the schools. And I didn't mean to go to the next item, but the county as, as well as the schools. And during the past four or five years, we've grown as a population. Service demands have grown, and therefore staffing demands have also grown. And this budget is an attempt to address as many of those staffing demands as, as physically possible. Economic development, we are working with an economic development prospect. Part of our dealings with that prospect is an incentive grant, is a business incentive grant that we've offered, and that is included in that number for economic development. Additional FY twenty-one school funding, two-hundred-thousand dollars. It's what's being recommended for additional operating dollars for the schools. We're also recommending three-hundred-thousand dollars out of that two-million-and-forty-five-thousand dollars on the top line that we're setting aside to the new elementary school, and that is to hire staff associated with the new elementary school project. So in total, it's five-hundred-thousand dollars that is being recommended to, for operating costs for schools. Employee health rate insurance increases. We're negotiating with our health insurance company right now. We were originally told that because we had a really good year as far as claims, we'd probably see a decrease, but they recommended that we budget flat for health insurance. And then several weeks ago, we got notice from our health insurance rate to anticipate an eight-point-seven percent increase. And working with our health insurance company, that number's come down to six-point-six percent increase, and we're not finished yet with them. So right now, we, we don't have an exact number, but we are budgeting. We've set aside two-hundred-thousand dollars to cover increases for health insurance. Virginia Retirement System is VRS and other benefits. A lot of that, those benefits, we don't have any say over. The state, it pretty much tells us our rates for the next year, and we're anticipating a hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand, five-hundred-and-ninety-six dollars. Confinement of inmates is a number that continues to grow. The previous two years, the main driver for the growth was our per diem rates had increased in RICO County, had increased our per diem rates. But we still, there is no per diem rate increase projected for next year, but looking at the trends of number of days that our inmates are currently in jail, we are projecting an, an increase of a hundred-thousand-five-hundred dollars. And I look at this a couple of ways. Yes, it's an increase, but I, I believe it's a sign that our sheriff's office is doing a great job in keeping us safe, and they're being efficient, so. Refuge collection. We are anticipating an increase in refuge collection of seventy-two-thousand-nine-hundred dollars. A lot of you have heard about plastics in China, China not accepting it. Well, that's having an impact on us, because we're getting less and less revenue from our recyclables. And that used to be an area where we made a lot of money, and it really kind of balanced out our costs for the other trash that, that we collect, but it's no longer the case. Sheriff Courts and Law Enforcement, we've projected a sixty-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-forty-five dollar increase. A lot of this is, is driven by demand calls, service calls. When I started here in two thousand and four, I believe we only had court maybe two days a week here. Now, we have court about every single day, and we've recently added new days to court, which has definitely created a, a demand for, for additional resources there. Elimination of school set aside in the amount of two-million-fourty-three-thousand-six-hundred-and-twenty-nine dollars. This is our current set aside for the new elementary school project. We're not doing away with this revenue. We're just redirecting it to other line items. Because we anticipate the borrowing occurring this fiscal year, we're anticipating that we're going to have some debt service payments next fiscal year in the form of interest payments. So that one-point-one-million-five-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand, I'm sorry, one-million-four-hundred-and-fifty-two-thousand dollars for debt service, all of that will be appropriated to our debt service line item, and that is encompassed in the two-million-and-forty-three-thousand dollars. Also, the operating costs for the schools, too, that will be appropriated to schools' operating costs as well. So we'll still be collecting the money, it just will be appropriated in, in another fashion. And other net increases, eighty-one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirteen dollars. The majority of that, I believe, sixty-seven, sixty-eight thousand dollars of that comes from departmental request. And if you think about it, we have fourteen departments that report directly to me, and then probably another ten, and I haven't counted them specifically, other line items that we have, probably more than that, in, in the county, budget codes that we have in, in the county. And out of all of those, those items, it's an eighty-one-thousand-eight-hundred-and-thirteen-dollar increase, which I think is great, and I definitely want to thank our department heads for being realistic in, in their request and really submitting to us true budgets of need. There's not any fluff in the departments, at least, well, all budgets have contingencies, but these are very, very lean budgets that our departments have, have presented to us. That totals four-million-one-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand, seven-hundred-and-seventeen dollars, which to, which equals the anticipated revenues. Therefore, I am recommending to you a balanced budget. I want to go back to that second line item, the one-million-five-hundred-and-sixty-one-thousand, three-hundred-and-twelve dollars, and this slide shows a breakdown of, of that request. We've mentioned the twelve new positions. That's a total of seven-hundred-and-four-thousand-six-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars. We've also budgeted ninety-two-thousand-two-hundred-and-forty-one dollars for our advanced life support program. Many of you know that we do offer an additional salary step increase for those firefighters who either come to us with the advanced life support certification, or firefighters that get the advanced life support certification, they get an increase of five-thousand dollars. That's been a great program for us, and it's, it's really been good for the citizens of New Kent County, because if you have the advanced life support certification, you can administer drugs and administer procedures that you cannot do if you don't have the certification. And we're talking heart attack procedures, procedures that can save lives, so. We are proposing six new positions for the sheriff's office totaling three-hundred-and-fifty-nine-thousand, nine-hundred-and-five dollars. A, we're proposing a new IT position, Assistant Chief Technology Officer. If you think about it, we've added more, we have added a little more staff, definitely a lot more demands, new software systems, but our staffing and IT has remained constant. They've not received a new staff person in over eight years. In fact, technically, they, they've lost one staff person, because we've moved one of their staff persons to the sheriff's office, and they specifically handle public safety now. And we, we believe, I believe, that they are in need of, of additional staff support. Commonwealth Attorney has requested a new Assistant Commonwealth Attorney, and as we've discussed previously, we've authorized in this budget year the county attorney, Commonwealth Attorney, to advertise for the position. This is a mandated position by the General Assembly. It's a position that all localities are required to fund if they have sheriff's department, law enforcement departments they utilize. It's a position that all localities are required to fund if they have sheriff's department, law enforcement departments that utilize body worn cameras. The sheriff has developed a career advancement program to address with salary compression. That program totals seventy thousand dollars. Because we haven't done raises as consistently as we'd like and as consistent with the market, the sheriff's office. And really because of the number of employees they have, the sheriff's office is running into issues where they're bringing on new employees. Pretty much at the same rate of pay or close to the same rate of pay as employees that's been with us for several years. Parks and Recreation, I'm recommending a new facility maintenance supervisor. Pine Fork Park is anticipated to be complete during the fall of this year. That's fifty-five more acres that we have to maintain. To maintain what we currently have is a struggle with just two part-time staff. Human Resources. Safety is a big focus of the county right now. Making sure that we meet the OSHA requirements, but more importantly, making sure that our staff is operating in a safe environment. In order to kind of reassure and enforce the safety measures that we're looking at right now. We are requesting a part-time safety coordinator that will work in the human resources department. Part-time permit technician is requested. We anticipate this being one of the busiest, if not the busiest year as far as construction in New Kent County ever. We've been working with a lot of consultants as far as planning and engineering and design for their residential developments. And we're starting to see those applications come in now. And right now, we have one person at the front counter and that person will need some assistance. The permit, the permanent battalion chief, right now, we have, we did some restructuring this year. As far as fire and rescue administration, where we've moved a staff person into an acting battalion chief position. That person has done a great job and has continued to do a great job with the county. And I'm recommending that we make that a permanent position. We do have some promotions, an environmental planner to the senior environmental planner position. That's a cost of eight thousand, four hundred and seventy-two dollars. And that's an existing position that is currently vacant. Commonwealth attorney, VRS, as well as the treasurer, VRS. We currently, for all constitutional officers, contribute five percent of their salary to the, well, five percent of the retirement cost. To the VRS retirement system. We also do that with staff as well. They were hired after a certain date and that's part of the plan one or plan two of the retirement system. So we want to make, treat the new constitutional officers as we treat the existing constitutional officers. And contribute the five percent to their retirement as well. Economic Development Director, we have a market adjustment there to bring him in line with other economic development directors in the region. That's a five thousand dollar increase. In planning, we have the promotion of a planner to a senior planner position. That is also an existing position that has been vacant. And we have a planner that's proven himself and we find that that's worthy of being promoted to the senior planner position. Social Services Director, again, a market adjustment to bring our social services director on par with other social services directors in the region. It is a five thousand dollar increase, but the cost to the county is nine hundred and thirty-four dollars. There is a, the state will pay the majority of that cost. Believe it's eighty-six, fourteen percent split. I believe that's the split as far as state funds and local funds. And we also have a adjustment for one of our captains. We have three captains in the fire and rescue department. It's a small adjustment of nine hundred and ten dollars, but that brings that captain in line with the other two captains. Again, that's a total of one million, five hundred, sixty-one thousand, three hundred and twelve dollars, as shown on the previous slide. Employee compensation and benefits. We're not proposing any increase to salaries in the FY twenty-one budget. No raises are being proposed. Health insurance rate, right now, it's at six point six percent. We're still working on our insurance provider for that. Hopefully, we can get that a little lower. But I am proposing that the county not pass that cost, that additional cost onto our staff. And the county absorbs that, that cost, especially in an environment where we're not proposing raises for the next fiscal year. I've mentioned previously, we are anticipating increases to the retirement rate. There are no increases to our health credit rate. We are anticipating an increase to our VRS life insurance. And we've not received a rate yet from our liability and auto insurance. We're waiting on our renewal package from Versa. Major capital costs. I won't spend a lot of time on these slides as we've, I've shared with you the entire capital improvement budget at previous meetings. The largest cost is bus replacements and then county vehicles at five hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, the line share for that. I believe we have six sheriff vehicles planned in the county vehicle replacement. And we do have the replacement of a fire apparatus, a tanker replacement to the tune of four hundred thousand dollars. I will mention with the four hundred thousand dollar tanker replacement. This will come from, fully from Farms of New Kent proffer money, money that we have received. And we have an additional payment that's due this month of two hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Which will give us a total amount of profits from Farms of New Kent, specifically for fire and rescue of five hundred thousand dollars. Capital funding for the three point five million dollar projects. Two point two million comes from our CIP cash reserves. Nine hundred and sixty-three thousand from proffers and state and federal grants total three hundred and twenty-six thousand, five hundred and fifteen dollars. Public utility fund. We're proposing no increase in water and sewer rates, which I'm very pleased to say. Because there was a time where annually, there was about an eight percent increase each year. Our system has grown. We're seeing more revenues in our system and we're able to hold our rates at its current level. No increases are proposed for connection and availability fees. And for the first time ever, since the Bottoms Bridge Service District was established. We're proposing a decrease in the Bottoms Bridge Service District tax rate of two cents. That will bring the avalorum tax from fifteen cents per one hundred, a real estate assessed value, to thirteen cents. Again, the main driver for this is just growth in our, in our system. We're seeing additional revenues from the new housings and new connections. And we're passing on that additional revenue back to the residents. The FY twenty-one public utility budget totals five million, seven hundred and eighty-nine thousand, three hundred and sixty-one dollars. Which is a significant decrease from last year, which totaled nine point three million. The big difference in that number is the capital project that connects the Farms of New Kent's water system to the Kentland water system. And that project is underway now. FY twenty-one capital projects total eight hundred and fifty-three thousand dollars. As you can see from the slide in FY twenty. That number totaled four hundred and sixty-eight, four hundred, four million, six hundred and eighty-five thousand, nine hundred dollars. Which primarily is the water connection project. Public utilities, CIP projects, we've also have discussed these in the past. So I won't spend a lot of time. The big one is backup power to the Permwell, number one. It's our goal to have backup power on all of our utility infrastructure and we're doing that as resources allow. We are looking at some significant upgrades in the colony's water system. That is one of our older water systems in the county. That might be the original water system. And over years, we've put a lot of money into maintaining that system. And we're at a point where we need to look at some significant investments to keep it going. Our budget calendar, we do have a budget retreat scheduled for this Friday at the Providence Forge Recreation Center. That retreat will begin at nine o'clock. It will start with a joint work session with the Board of Supervisors and School Board. That meeting is open to the public and we encourage the public to attend. And that's when we'll really get into the line items and details of the budget. We do anticipate a budget public hearing on May eleventh, a May regular meeting. And we anticipate an adoption or the board taking action on the budget at the May twenty-seventh work session. One date that, one date that's not included in this is the April regular meeting. When we agree upon the tax rate for next fiscal year, I will need to conduct a public hearing in May on the tax rate. We also look to do more community outreach this year. And we've established five community meetings. We've scheduled five community meetings and we've called, we call them firehouse chats. And those meetings will take place at our five fire stations. There'll be morning and evening meetings. The schedule will be published in our local media. And Facebook and website and we'll get notices out to our newspapers as well. And we encourage the public to come out. We'll focus on the budget, but also it's a great opportunity for the county to provide updates on other areas to the community. Like to thank you for allowing me to present the FY twenty-one budget. Again, I look forward to our budget retreat on Friday and this time, I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do we have any questions in the discussion?
Thank you, thank you. Okay, thank you.
Ms. Hathaway, thank you so much for the presentation. At this time, it is after seven, it's seven oh three. So we have a public hearing, our first public, our only public hearing is our general obligation school bonds for construction of the new elementary school. And our representatives from Sands Anderson is here.
Madam Chairman, members of the boards, members of the board, good evening. My name is Jesse Bausch, I'm with Sands Anderson, we serve as bond counsel to the county. This would be a public hearing just on this, this is kind of the initial phase of, you know, the legal steps you have to go through for financing of this new elementary school project. It's, this meeting has been advertised, the hearing's been advertised with county attorney and staff's input. And, you know, all the proper notices have been done. So this would be an initial public hearing to consider any, you know, discussion, any comment on this new elementary school. The notice has a maximum amount of up to thirty-seven million dollars. I think, we've got representatives from Davenport here can kind of talk about projected numbers and things like that. I certainly don't think we're going to be at that sort of number, but we want to go on high side of that for what we advertise for. Just so that we capture any sort of possibilities. I think, as I said, I think it'll end up being lower than that, but we want to cover that amount. There, I believe there's two separate resolutions in your packet. We're not necessarily proposing either of those for passage tonight. But those are just to kind of go over the two possible options that we've been looking at and Davenport has kind of been analyzing for folks. Both of them involve a borrowing of the general obligation bonds to be issued by the county through the Virginia Public School Authority. And there's two different ways to do that. They have a pool program that goes on in the spring and in the fall. They're right now ramping up for the spring pool. So to get into the spring pool, that resolution would have to be adopted by, I believe they have an April second or April third deadline. So there is some time on that possibility. The pool can be good for kind of smaller to medium sized localities. Because that lets them all kind of pool together and kind of share borrowing costs. And so that everybody can kind of get their projects in there. And then the Virginia Public School Authority, they're the ones who issue the public bonds out in the bond market. And then it kind of gets divvied up, you know, between all those members. So that's one of the possibilities we're looking at. Some of the issues there is just timing is not really under the county's control under that sort of option. And it's a little bit less flexible because it has to kind of fit within that program, the program requirements and the program calendar. The other possibility that's just, we have a resolution forward, it's being considered, is a standalone issue through the Virginia Public School Authority. So that is an issue that again, would go through VPSA, but it would be a single, the only borrower in that issue would be the county themselves. So that's a deal that's really, like I said, it's technically issued by the Virginia Public School Authority. But it's really the county credit that the bond market is going to be looking at. In that sort of situation, the county has a bit more control over a schedule and how it's structured and things like that. But it's also, it's an opportunity for the bond markets, the rating agencies to kind of have a look at the county. Because it's really the county's credit that is really going to carry and help, you know, get you the interest rates, you know, on that one. Whereas in the pool deal, it's really kind of a blended, you know, of kind of all those pool participants. And the county, or the state support that can kind of support that. On the standalone issue, it's really, it's the county's credit with a little bit of that state enhancement. So those are the two things that are kind of being considered and analyzed. Some of that, some of that relates to kind of cost and what do we think that the best rate we're going to be? Some of that relates to kind of timing and sort of flexibility. The standalone issue, you guys can kind of do it anytime. We've been talking with the VPSA folks and they are, they have a meeting this week. And they're kind of approving, as far as we understand, both options, I think, at that meeting. And so either those are kind of going to be on the table. If, you know, if the project itself, maybe it needs some more work to be done or analysis on what the final cost be. The standalone might be a better option. I mean, the other, the other possibility would be the pool in the fall. But then, you know, the money wouldn't be there until later in the fall, which probably wouldn't be until maybe a November timeframe. Which doesn't really sound like kind of fits with what the kind of planning schedule is. So that's kind of the basic analysis of what's being considered. Like I said, RT from Davenport is here and maybe kind of talk about numbers and stuff like that.
Good evening, thank you for having us here this evening. As Jesse pointed out, we are looking at funding the new elementary school. And the not to exceed amount that you see referenced, that actually. Again, is the not to exceed amount, but what VPSA requires when they go to issue bonds in the market is a little bit of cushion in there to account for the bond structure. We will not issue any more debt that needs to be to fund the desired project fund. And we understand that that project fund will be offset by dollars that the county staff has already identified as being used to buy down the borrowing. So you'll borrow less money. One thing to note, VPSA did reach out and say they are rescheduling their board meeting from this week. We don't know when it'll be rescheduled for, but we're working closely with them to get the update on that. We're just here again tonight to answer any questions you have. No actionable items that we are anticipating this evening. We do know during your retreat on Friday, this will come up for discussion potentially. And then be action then, or if not, maybe later in the month at the March twenty-fifth work session. So if you have any questions about the financing, I'm happy to answer those.
Do we have any questions?
Madam Chair, what is your percentage of contingency, I guess you call them, the cushion that's required?
Well, we, we don't have any, I don't know what the exact cushion is. I do know that the county got bids in March. I do know that the county got bids in March third, so we're still working with planning assumptions at this point.
So we'll have a better number after all that's kind of worked out?
I believe that's part of the conversation to be had on this Friday.
Any other questions? Hathaway, thank you so much for being here for your presentation. We'll see you on Friday. This closes our public hearing.
You have to have a public hearing? You have to open a public hearing?
We're now opening a public hearing? Hasn't closed.
Do you have anybody to sign up?
Do you have anybody to sign up, sir? Thank you. We have no one signed up, so we can now close our public hearing. Bear with me. So we thank you again so much for being here. At this time, we'll have our elected officials' reports. Mr. Lockwood? And Mr. Lockwood, if you would speak into your mic, please. Thank you.
Yes, thank you. The only thing I've got, Ms. Page, is on March twenty-eighth, we're going to have the shredding event in the county. It'll be located here from one to four, I believe, and we're going to have a shredding truck here. They're going to be recycling tires and electronics, and it'll be a, a really good turnout like last year, so I hope you guys will start collecting all your recyclables and be ready to participate in the event.
Are you asking for volunteers to help?
Oh, we'll always take volunteers, so. They've already corralled my truck and trailer, so. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Mrs. Sears?
Uh, yes, I'll, I'll try to get through this. I've been in a building today that's got a lot of mold in it, and I'm just choking up. Anyway, if you remember about four or five years ago, Dominion Energy started this prestigious underground program where they come into communities and bury the cables, all the lines underground. And I'm proud to say that I applied for this for Woodhaven Shores four years ago, and they have been approved, and they will start the underground program in April, and we'll be meeting in, I think it's March twenty-third, at the annual Woodhaven Shores meeting to announce that they will be having all their power lines buried, because I think it's great for that community. But that's it. Thank you.
Thank you so much for all you do, sir. Mrs. Tiller?
I have nothing right now.
Thank you. Ms. Evelyn?
No, ma'am.
And what I do have is on April the twenty-fifth, at Colonial Downs, there will be Relay for Life of New Kent County. Our opening ceremony will be at three o'clock. We are encouraging everyone to come out and participate and donate. It is a community event. I know there are a ton of other things going on, and that's what happens in April. However, it is so appreciated for all that come out and support our survivors, and also help fight against cancer and to help find a cure. And that is all I have at this time. All right. Ms. Hathaway, you have a staff report?
Yes. I do have a few items to update you on and, and the public. First of all, for the public, I'd like for everyone to know that our Envision New Kent Strategic Planning Process is well underway, and we're asking the community to take our online survey. You can get to the survey, the link is on our website, it's also on our Facebook page, as well as the Envision New Kent County Strategic Plan Facebook pages as well. We'll be collecting survey results up until April tenth, and we encourage you all to, to take part in that process. We're getting really great feedback from the ser-, from the survey right now, and the steering committee is very actively working on the new strategic plan for the county. Have a couple of items for action. Have a budget transfer request that, that requires your action from the, the schools. We see this last week. It is appropriate, it is to transfer funding from the account we've titled appropriation of funds from prior years. As you recall, at the end of each fiscal year, whatever funds that are left over in the school's budget goes into this capital account to fund capital projects. We are requesting one hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred dollars of that funding be transferred to two projects. One involves historic high, I'm sorry, high school stadium lighting updates in the amount of seventy-four thousand, the other for the purchase of a school bus in the amount of one hundred and seventeen thousand, five hundred dollars.
Okay. Is there any discussion from the board? Mr. Tiller?
It says, high school stadium lighting update. Is that update or upgrade?
Up, I believe it's an upgrade.
Upgrade from what's already existing?
From what's existing, yes.
Are they going LED lighting or something? Is that compared?
Yes. So they're converting everything from the originals from nineteen eighty-eight up till today for itself, for security purposes as well as, but it's all moving to LED lighting that will be completed this summer, while the students are out of school and be ready for the next football season.
So a lot cheaper to operate?
Yes, correct. A lot more efficient as well.
Any more discussion? If not, can we have a motion?
I'm sorry, I didn't prepare a motion, but the motion would be to approve the proposed budget transfer request.
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mr. Tiller?
I move to approve the budget transfer request from the school of one hundred and ninety-one thousand, five hundred dollars. Hundred, yeah. I'm sorry. That's it.
Ms. Watkins, would you poll the board, please?
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye.
And I have one more item that requires board action, too, and this is appropriation At our November Board of Supervisors meeting, our work session, actually, in November, staff approved a contract for Arnett Muldro for our strategic plan consultant. In that motion, it did not appropriate the funds for that contract, so I would ask that you approve an appropriation of sixty-three thousand dollars, which was the original motion amount back in November, approve appropriation in the amount of sixty-three thousand dollars from our capital fund balance for the strategic planning consultant.
And that one is not written down either?
And what's the term of his contract?
Until they finish, the...
Five years?
That, that's September, actually. September of this year is the projec-, projected finish date and contractual finish date as
Madam Chair, if there's no other discussion, I move to appropriate sixty-three thousand from the capital fund balance to the strategic plan consultant.
Ms. Watkins, will you poll the board, please?
Mr. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye.
Thank you.
No more surprises? Okay. One thing I did want to say, and so it is known that the transfer we did for the schools, we appreciative of the schools for being good stewards, and it's because of their stewardship over our taxpayers' money that we're able to, that they're able to do these additional capital projects, so thank you for that. All righty, and to reen-
Madam Chair.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Uh, just real quick, maybe Mr. Hafte's been, spent a lot of time at General Assembly for the last sixty days. I don't know if it would be appropriate for to give us a quick update of everything that happened, or some highlights of how New Kent's affected, if that's appropriate.
A couple of things. The first one is that the General Assembly did agree to allow counties to have the same taxing authority as cities have in three areas. One is meals tax, which we already have. The other one is tobacco, tax on tobacco. It's optional. You have to, you have to do it, but you can. And the third is transient occupancy, and we had asked Delegate Hodges to introduce a separate bill to add us to the list of counties that could adopt taxes on, on lodging, and that passed, but there also was passed another bill that allowed all counties to do it. And so as of July first, assuming that the governor doesn't make any changes to it, which I don't foresee, you will be able to adopt a transient occupancy tax if you choose to do that. So that's, that's in the area of taxing. As far as horse racing goes, the casino bills were passed, and so people can have referendums in five localities this fall to pass legislation to establish casinos. New Kent's not one of those five localities, but there is legislation that's tied to that, that if the casinos pass, that Colonial Downs can increase their number of historical racing machines at Colonial Downs and throughout Virginia by two thousand additional machines, so that they will offset the revenue that the casinos would take. Jay Lark did a study that said that if the casinos were operational in Virginia, that the Colonial Downs revenue would go down by forty-five percent. And so in order to offset that, they've agreed to allow Colonial Downs to have additional machines up to two thousand. There's a limit, time limit on that, it's two years until they can add them, but they will have the authority to add additional machines to offset that revenue, potential revenue loss. And that goes along with sports betting, which is going to be allowed probably before the NFL season starts, and online, online lottery sales, so a lot of, a lot of gambling stuff. But generally, the other bill that was passed was a bill that allows localities to do collective bargaining, was originally going to be mandatory, now it's optional. So collective bargaining for public employees is allowed if it's approved by the local governing body, and so everybody has the option if you will, if you want to do it after July first.
And my bill, House Bill fifteen forty-one?
Which is?
Central Virginia.
Oh, the Central Virginia Transportation Authority, that did pass, and so we are going to have a regional transportation authority, the same as Northern Virginia and Hampton Roads, and there will be tax money coming from that directly to the localities. As part of that, the other change to transportation funding is to allow localities to have more of a say in transportation funding, and to sort of change the sort of mindset that's been in Virginia for a long time, that the state will distribute all of the transportation money. Now it will go back to the localities, and you will have a bigger say in how transportation money is distributed in the county.
I'm excited.
So that's a good thing.
Thank you.
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Tiller?
Can I ask a question, Mr. Hafte?
Yes.
If the casinos, five areas that are allowed, without, if they can build a casino, I guess it'd be a regular casino, not just the historical racing machine?
It'll be regular casinos, yes.
All right. Would that allow?
Las Vegas-style casinos.
Would that allow Colonial Downs then to offer other kinds of gambling as well?
Uh, no. They'll just do historical racing the way they have.
And sportsbook?
Any other questions?
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. So I guess we can say that. Other business? Or do you have other business, Mr. Hathaway?
No, ma'am.
Okay. And now we have our appointments delegated by district. Mr. Lockwood?
I do not have any, Mr. Tiller.
Thank you. Mr. Sears?
Yes, one moment, please. Madam Chair, I would like to move to appoint Dave Kewell as a District Four Representative to the Broadband Advisory Committee to serve a one-year term beginning January one, twenty twenty, and ending December thirty-one, twenty twenty. Also would like to move to appoint Derek Kestner as a District Four Representative to the Clean County Committee to complete a four-year term ending December thirty-one, twenty, twenty-one. Thank you.
Mr. Tiller?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Evelyn?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Watkins, will you poll the board, please?
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Sears?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Aye. Now, we have appointments now delegated by district. Mr. Lockwood?
I do not have any, Mr. Tiller.
Mr. Sears?
I do not have any.
Mr. Tiller?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Evelyn?
No, ma'am.
All right. Regional boards and commissions? All right. We have none. And so the information I have for you is that our meeting schedule, our next regularly scheduled meeting of the Board of Supervisors will be at six PM on Monday, April thirteenth, twenty twenty, and the next work, work session will be at nine o'clock AM on Wednesday, March the twenty-fifth. Both will be in the boardroom of the New Kent County Administration Building, and the board will also meet at our budget retreat on this Friday, March the thirteenth, at Problems Forge Recreation Center. Do we mention to adjourn? Okay. And we will, we will continue this meeting.
We can have a motion to continue this meeting till Friday for the work session.
Okay. What he said. It's been advertised as its own separate meeting, so you can adjourn.
Okay.
Do you want to use the address to the rec.
Please.
Ninety-nine hundred Carriage Road.
Thank you. Ninety-nine hundred Carriage Road. We will see you on Friday morning.
We need to go to the motion of amendment. Yes. No withdrawal. Second.
Mr. Tiller?
Aye.
Mr. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Lockwood?
Aye.
Mr. Evelyn?
Aye.
And Ms. Page?
Meeting adjourned.